Welcome to election night Monterey City Hall with what an exciting evening nationally, locally, statewide. And for those of you folks who have had a chance to join us this afternoon and afternoon session only, we give you a very warm welcome. We're very glad that you're with us. And I'm going to ask our articulate city clerk Clementine to introduce the city council, please.
Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Hafa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith. Oh, you're muted. Is he here? Councilmember Williamson?
Here.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes, I'm here as well. Thank you so much. We're going to again ask before we call it to order, I'm going to ask Clementine just to review how viewers and participants can join us at our city council meeting. For some folks, it's we're becoming used to it, but it's certainly different like everything else in our lives during COVID-19. Before we do that, can you see over my left shoulder who's looking down here? Gracie's right up here now, so she's joined the meeting. All right, so Clementine, please tell people about Governor Newsom's executive order and how we're running our meeting and how folks can participate, please.
Yes, exactly. In order to be very careful about COVID-19, we've been holding our meetings recently on Zoom Gov. We encourage members of the public to join our meeting on the Zoom app, which is preferred since there's no lag time and you're connected live to the meeting. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey, which has an approximate 10-second delay and on Comcast Channel 25 on television, which has the longest delay up to 90 seconds. If you plan to make a public comment, please join the meeting using Zoom on the app or by telephone as soon as possible so that there's enough time to accommodate those delays. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, use the link or phone number on the agenda, which is at isearchmonterey.org. And since the meeting has started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join us by telephone, you can dial 833-568-8864, which is toll-free, and then enter meeting ID 1607729333. If you're prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment, once you're logged in on the Zoom app, or if you connect by telephone, you'll need to raise your hand. You can do that on the app,[461.34][461.34[S02] or if you're on the phone, dial *9 to raise your hand. Public commenters will be muted until it's[466.86][466.86[S02] their turn to speak. When called upon, unmute yourself on the app or by dialing *6 on the phone.[472.44][472.44[S02] We ask that public commenters, please turn off their television or computer speakers, or go to[477.54][477.54[S02] another room while connected by phone, as any background noise can cause interference with the[481.74][481.74[S02] broadcast. And I'll call in each public speaker in order of their hands raised. The mayor has[487.26][487.26[S02] designated a three-minute time limit for today's meeting with a countdown timer that will be shown[492.96][492.96[S02] on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. Please stay[498.84][498.84[S02] within your time limit, and we look forward to receiving your public comment today.
Thank you for that really excellent presentation. So we will be called ourselves to order, and what[510.54][510.54[S01] we're going to do is the Pledge of Allegiance. And we traditionally have had the flag above Colton[517.32][517.32[S01] Hall, where the Constitution Convention was written in 1850, and for the state of California[523.14][523.14[S01] in two languages, in Spanish and English. And so we're going to see our flag in a moment. There[530.64][530.64[S01] it is. I'm going to invite everyone, please, to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so the next item of business on our agenda is public comments. For anything that's not[567.05][567.05[S01] on the agenda, and if you wanted to speak to our consent items, or our two public hearings with[574.62][574.62[S01] respect to Mills Act and some very exciting historic properties, please wait until you have[582.72][582.72[S01] that opportunity. So this would be inviting anyone who'd like to speak to us, and within the[588.96][588.96[S01] jurisdiction of the city of Monterey is always preferred. And if people want to leave a contact[594.00][594.00[S01] either now or later, I can assure you that our astonishing staff will get back to you. So do we[601.32][601.32[S01] have anyone who'd like to just do a general public comment, not on the agenda?
We do have two people connected to our meeting. If anyone would like to give public comment,[613.08][613.08[S02] please dial *9 to raise your hand if you're on the telephone, or use the Zoom app to raise your hand. And Mayor Roberson, the people attending are not raising their hand, so no public comments generally.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to consent, as far as any public want to pull any consent[638.04][638.04[S01] items that we know of?
No, Mr. Mayor. We're not aware that the public wants to pull any item.
Okay, that was our approachable city manager, Hans Duxlar. Thank you. And the only thing I want[653.82][653.82[S01] to highlight is it's back again for the Waterfront Resources Recovery Facility project,[660.36][660.36[S01] which I'm very excited about, and that is to get the nasty compactor off the wharf, for a lack[668.22][668.22[S01] of a better descriptor, and to comply with the state laws and also the values that we have for[674.94][674.94[S01] sustainability, where we're going to have a recycling facility that's going to take care of waste, which will be very minimal, and then liquid waste, which will be recycled now, as long as[689.40][689.40[S01] what we do on our curb site. So it's a very exciting project, and I'm so happy that we're finally[695.70][695.70[S01] getting there. Any council comments on any of the items, or want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, just a comment on four?
Please, Councilmember Ed, please.
Yeah, four is the first reading only of an ordinance that amends the city code to ratify[715.44][715.44[S07] the Reserve Peace Officer Program that is coming back. So I just want to say that I support that.[721.86][721.86[S07] And many, many years ago, that's how I started, was as a deputy sheriff reserve in Sacramento[729.06][729.06[S07] Sheriff's Office. That brings back memories, but I just wanted to say that I support that for[734.82][734.82[S07] the department, and I think that gives us some very unique opportunities moving forward. So I[740.46][740.46[S07] support that one.
Thank you. Councilmember Ed has a vast experience in public safety and still very active in helping[748.20][748.20[S01] jurisdictions around the state. So thank you for that. Anyone else on any items? If not, I'll, for the sake of moving along, I'll move to approve the consent. We have a second?
Second.
Lots of seconds. Roll call, please, Clementine.
Could we take public comment on the consent agenda? I'm not sure we did that.
Oh, thank you so much.
So members of the public who are attending, if you'd like to give public comment on this item,[779.16][779.16[S02] please raise your hand on the Zoom app, or dial *9 if you're connected by telephone. Just a reminder[786.18][786.18[S02] to call in, please dial 833-568-8864, and enter meeting ID 160772933*. And if prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. So let's give it a moment.
Sure.
I don't see any more members of the public joining our meeting, and nobody has their hands raised,[821.04][821.04[S02] so no public comment.
Well, I'm glad you brought that to my attention, because Wendy Brinkman had emailed us, and we[827.04][827.04[S01] want to assure everyone that when you email the city, all of us read those and take them very[832.32][832.32[S01] much to heart. A lot of times, instead of getting five council members responding, we'll filter[838.38][838.38[S01] through the city managers. So we're very interested in getting people's input on agenda items or[843.78][843.78[S01] anything else. And with respect to that, we got a letter from Wendy Brinkman, representing the Fishermen's Wharf Association, who are supportive of this project and looking forward to what we're[856.74][856.74[S01] going to do with the space once it's faken. So I think that's also very exciting. So we did have[863.28][863.28[S01] a motion and a second. Now we can do roll call.
MK, you want to take this?
Yes, I will. Councilmember Hafa?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes, and hi, MK.
Hi. Councilmember Smith?
Yes, and welcome aboard here.
Thank you. Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson.
And a yes for me, and that was a very astounding roll call that you did. Welcome. So you got your[898.86][898.86[S01] first adjective.
Thank you.
Above many. All right, that passes 5-0. So let's go to our first public hearing, and that is Mills Act. And I think because of state law, a Mills Act[921.06][921.06[S01] request, which someone designates their property as historic, they get a property tax advantage. But on the other hand, they also agree to rules and regulations, which controls and puts an overview[938.58][938.58[S01] on what they can do with their historic property. So it goes from the Historic Preservation Commission[944.94][944.94[S01] to the Planning Commission, and finally to the city council, and I believe that is by state law. Why we have that, because so many of these are kind of not routine, but make so much sense. We[961.44][961.44[S01] wish there's a way we could fly through them, but we're going to follow the rules, as always,[965.76][965.76[S01] and be transparent. So the first is 946 West Franklin Street, and we'll turn it over to our[973.86][973.86[S01] city manager, who can introduce one of his awesome staff members.
Mr. Mayor, I think Councilmember Williamson wants to say something first.
Yes.
I have to recuse myself. I live within 500 feet of the property, so I'm going to go ahead and[990.00][990.00[S04] just mute my mic and camera for now, and we'll join you all in the next item.
Okay, well, while you're gone, we'll designate your house historic too.
I'll take it.
Just kidding, folks. Okay, thank you, Tyler. Okay, Hans?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item is West Franklin Street, and I think the representative[1018.62][1018.62[S06] there is either Christie or Fernando, of course. How could I miss that? So it's Fernando. Thank you.[1026.24][1026.24[S06] I was hoping some of you, I forgot really who did what, and I hope somebody would unmute herself[1032.11][1032.11[S06] first, but you didn't do me that favor. So anyways, it's Fernando for 946 West Franklin.
Thank you, Hans. Okay, that's right. 946 West Franklin is first for a historic rezon and Mills Act request. And these are recent photos of the building. It's a single-family dwelling in the Craftsman[1059.35][1059.35[S11] bungalow style. As you can see, most of the character-defining features of the Craftsman[1065.83][1065.83[S11] bungalow are intact. For example, the wide eaves and the horizontal window arrangement and the[1074.48][1074.48[S11] front porch. And as you can see, all sides of the property is basically intact. The property is significant because it's known as the Alvin Stall House, which qualifies as the[1090.44][1090.44[S11] local historic resource under California Register Criterion 3 in the area of architecture, as a[1097.76][1097.76[S11] good and essentially intact example of the Craftsman bungalow style. And Ken Seavey,[1104.24][1104.24[S11] architectural historian, prepared the intensive survey for this property and found that it matches[1110.72][1110.72[S11] that architectural style, which was prevalent in the 1920s in Monterey. As Mr. Mayor said,[1118.64][1118.64[S11] this item went to the HPC and Planning Commission, which recommended that the city council approve[1125.48][1125.48[S11] the rezon and Mills Act. Therefore, staff recommendation is that the council rezoned the[1132.26][1132.26[S11] property to give it historic zoning and authorize the Mills Act contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Fernando, and welcome to our meeting. Do we have any, is the owner, has the owner[1148.33][1148.33[S01] joined our meeting, or do we have any public comment? Let's do public comment and find out if[1153.92][1153.92[S01] the owner's with us or not. Clementine, what do we have?
So we've had the chyron up for a while. Nobody additional has joined the meeting. There are two[1165.20][1165.20[S02] people here still, and if anyone would like to speak on this item, number six, please use Zoom[1170.48][1170.48[S02] to raise your hand. And I don't see anyone raising their hand, so I don't believe so, Mayor.
Okay, very good. Unless there are any questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the first[1186.74][1186.74[S01] reading.
Second?
Okay, I think I made the motion. All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Williamson is recused, so we're going to move on to Councilmember Hafa.
Yes.
And Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Roberson.
And a yes for me. So that passes 4-0, and...
Does the mayor may I make a comment?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, please, Councilmember Ed.
Yeah, didn't get it in time to do a discussion, but I'm, you know, very pleased that this is moving[1229.94][1229.94[S07] forward with a majority vote. I just want to say, as we always see these, and we look at the[1235.94][1235.94[S07] architecture, we get to hear and learn about what the owners are committed to doing. I'm just[1243.56][1243.56[S07] looking at the wherethes that Laura Adami-Finwick is the owner of the property. So congratulations,[1252.14][1252.14[S07] and thank you very much for the commitment of maintaining the property and preserving its[1257.66][1257.66[S07] historical value for the neighborhood. So I know it's a big cost for the owners that do a Mills[1262.88][1262.88[S07] Act, and a long-term commitment to maintain the property. So thank you very much for those that go[1268.58][1268.58[S07] down this path, and I'll say that for the same for the next agenda item as well. It's a big[1273.68][1273.68[S07] commitment for the owners, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Ed. All right, the next item is the first reading to rezon 491 Webster Street as a historic resource. And before we start, I have to confess, I love thrift shops. So I'm a regular visitor to Branches,[1297.98][1297.98[S01] which is a thrift shop that supports San Carlos K through 8 school. And I've watched this building[1306.61][1306.61[S01] put, being developed by Greg and Becky Beardsley, and they have done an incredible job on restoring[1317.90][1317.90[S01] this building. It is absolutely beautiful, as you're going to see from the slides. And I have[1324.32][1324.32[S01] the opportunity to get to know them as I've been down in that area. So I appreciate having them[1330.98][1330.98[S01] as friends, as well as applicants tonight. And so Hans, who's going to make the presentation for us?
Yeah, the presentation will be done by Christie, please.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kristi Savdo, Associate Planner with the City of Monterey. Property owners Gregory and Rebecca Beardsley applied to rezon the property as a city historic resource and enter[1354.14][1354.14[S12] into a Mills Act contract with the city. The property is located on Webster Street in downtown Monterey. The house was constructed in 1939[1364.34][1364.34[S12] as a two-story wood-framed Spanish colonial-style residence. In the 1950s and 1960s, the wood door[1372.08][1372.08[S12] and windows were replaced with aluminum. However, in 2017, they made significant changes to restore[1379.88][1379.88[S12] the property back to its glory, and added in addition a first-story addition on the east and[1387.50][1387.50[S12] west sides of the residence. And then also, you could see a detached garage and living space above[1393.38][1393.38[S12] that was also added to the property. And the property is eligible under Criterion 3. Under the area of architecture is a good example[1405.50][1405.50[S12] of Spanish colonial style, designed by noted master boat builder Frank Sino. The original owner was[1411.86][1411.86[S12] Antonio Incaviglia, I always pass that up, sorry, was a Sicilian-born commercial fisherman and[1419.84][1419.84[S12] captain of the first liner fishing boat Tommy Boy from 1934 to 1973. Staff recommends that the[1427.94][1427.94[S12] city council adopt the first reading of an ordinance to rezon the property from Plant Community[1432.38][1432.38[S12] Downtown Emergency Shelter to Plant Community Downtown Emergency Shelter Historic Zoning, and enter into a Mills Act contract with the city. I believe the owner is on the line if you[1446.48][1446.48[S12] have any questions, and I'm also available for any questions.
All right, let's ask if Greg or Becky want to say anything right now. Clementine?
I do see that Greg is raising his hand, so I will allow him to speak. Mr. Beardsley, you should be able to speak at this point. You may need to unmute yourself. There you go.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I notice that shirt you're wearing, it looks like[1478.34][1478.34[S13] something from Branches. No offense.
Greg, when you're done, I'm going to tell you a funny story, but go ahead.
Well, as our mayor said, we've been working on this for a few years, and we're very proud of it.[1492.86][1492.86[S13] We get a lot of people that stop and chat with us and ask us about a lot of different things. When[1499.46][1499.46[S13] I first started this project, gosh, three years ago, maybe four, Christie Hopper was the head planner[1504.62][1504.62[S13] then. And I went in with my architect and met with her, and we told her what we wanted to do,[1511.28][1511.28[S13] and she made a lot of suggestions, which we incorporated in our plans. And we didn't deviate[1518.24][1518.24[S13] from those plans, and we had our final inspection about six, eight months ago, I guess. And so we're[1527.66][1527.66[S13] very happy there. We're still doing some landscaping and stuff like that, but pretty much the house[1533.12][1533.12[S13] is completed. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Okay, thank you, Greg. And again, you're doing a beautiful job.
Thank you.
All right, there are no questions for Mr. Beardsley. We'll see if there's any public comment.
So this would be the table on the meeting. If you would like to raise your hand using the Zoom[1556.34][1556.34[S02] app, or *9 if you're calling by phone. We have had the chyron up for a while, and nobody additional[1563.00][1563.00[S02] has joined. So it looks like we have no more public comments on this, Mayor.
Okay, good. Well, since Greg brought it up, I must tell you the shirt I'm wearing. So I purchased[1578.42][1578.42[S01] the shirt that I'm wearing at Kohl's, and then I donate, I had two of them. So I donated them to[1586.88][1586.88[S01] Branches, which is a thrift shop. Yes, I'm a thrift shop junkie. Now you know everybody. And so[1592.16][1592.16[S01] one day I was in Branches, and I said, oh, look at those two shirts. Oh, look at that. I think they'll[1599.48][1599.48[S01] fit me. So I bought them, and I brought them home, and I realized I bought back the shirts that I[1604.34][1604.34[S01] had donated to the shop.
Did you donate them back, Mayor?
Sorry, really. Hey Daddy, they might fit you too. Anyway, that was hilarious. All right, enough stories. We'll entertain a motion for approval of[1625.70][1625.70[S01] first reading. Anyone?
This time, this time I will move to approve.
And this time I will second.
All right. Without further discussion, we'll do roll call, please.
Before we get to discussion, can I make a statement?
Yes, please.
Yeah, very similar to a previous. Thank you very much for the Beardsleys and their commitment.[1645.02][1645.02[S07] And as it was read in the record, Frank Sino, the boat builder, was in that home, and that name[1652.94][1652.94[S07] is very familiar to many, many of our Monterey fishermen and families. And so that name, it's[1660.02][1660.02[S07] good to know that name, will live as a legacy at that home, courtesy of the Beardsleys' commitment.[1666.44][1666.44[S07] So thank you very much for all the hard work and expense. It's a beautiful home.
Any more discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
MK doesn't know she's not supposed to do that.
Councilmember Hafa?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mayor Roberson.
Yes, thank you. So we've got kind of a running joke that when Councilmember Williamson is the[1709.16][1709.16[S01] first one on the roll call, he goes, what? I'm not ready.
I did that on purpose.
Okay. Okay, let's go to agenda's new matters. Tyler, I'll turn it to you. It's my understanding[1724.64][1724.64[S01] that you'd like to table this item and bring it back again for, it's important to bring it back[1729.74][1729.74[S01] again soon. So I'll turn it to you, please.
Yeah, so I'll just go ahead and make a motion to table.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
And just to give a little bit additional context, when I was initially putting this forward, I didn't[1746.42][1746.42[S04] put two and two together. Our council meeting is on the night of election, so I will save my words[1752.12][1752.12[S04] in order to let you all get out and enjoy this, what is to be an enlightening evening.
It's going to be really interesting. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We don't currently, but I believe AMP only just is putting up the chyron right now, so give us a[1770.84][1770.84[S02] moment, please.
Okay, so the action is to table it, which means it will come back, not at a specific time, but[1777.38][1777.38[S01] hopefully soon. A very important topic, says we need to talk about with respect to affordable housing.
And I think I'm a little delayed on watching the, okay, we've got the chyron up, so let's see. I[1791.12][1791.12[S02] don't see anyone new having joined the meeting. However, pending, if you would like to give public[1798.86][1798.86[S02] comment, please raise your hand. like to give public comment, please raise your hand. It looks like no public comments on this, Mayor Roberson.
All right, thank you. So we do have a motion and a second to table, and we're looking forward to this discussion earlier rather than later. Tyler, thank you for bringing it to our attention. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Hopper?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Mayor Roberson.
And that's a yes for me as well. And so we're going to go to council comments, and why don't we just go ahead and start with Dan? You want to start us out tonight? Anything you want to share with us?
Yes, I would. Even though we have, now that we have finished our election cycle, I would like to personally thank all the supporters that, in my election, reelection, and I want to like thank them, that all the work they did, and everybody, we still have time to vote, so please get out and vote. And I think that's about it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ed?
I think I'll just pass and turn it over to others, but celebrating, you know, tonight, and we watch the elections, and thanks for those that dialed into this short meeting, but don't have anything else, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Tyler?
Yeah, so I will keep minds brief. I just want to say thank you to all those who stepped forward to run for an office. It's not an easy thing to do, and you're stepping up to do a public service, so I'm sending positive vibes and best wishes to everybody, and thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
Yeah, like Dan, I'd like to convey my appreciation to folks who supported me in the campaign, and I also wanted to send good wishes to you, Mayor Clyde, and Councilmember Dan, and yeah, to all of the candidates who ran, I think in Monterey, we had a really good issues-focused campaign, and look forward to seeing the results.
Yes, thank you. I heard a phrase about a year ago where someone said, and you may have heard it before, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. So again, thanks to everybody who want to be at the table. I'm thinking about our, we have really four pandemics going on, if you think about it. We have the COVID-19 and the health pandemic. We have an economic pandemic, and I know many of us are receiving emails and requests from our business community, and we're very concerned about what our restaurants and hospitality are going to look like during our winter season. Then, of course, there's the social justice, and as we always pledge allegiance to the flag with liberty and justice for all, we want to make sure that's true, that really happens for us. And finally, we have the climate warming. So as I look at things locally, statewide, regionally, and nationally, how are we going to tackle those problems? That's by taking care of the city of Monterey, and taking care of each other. This country needs a lot of healing. And that's what I'm really looking forward to as we go forward. However someone votes, we need healing. So city manager reports, please.
Yes, I just wanted to stick with the theme and let you know that the ballot box in front of the library is open until 8:00 PM, and then it gets collected by the county's election office, and your votes will be counted, and after that, the box is closed.
Thank you. Well, with that, I appreciate you all, and have a good evening. Our meeting's adjourned.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.